The meeting is called to order. The pledge will be led by Board Member Pat Welsh.
Join me, please.
My diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stays, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Stidham. Great, thank you so much. Welcome to the February 20th Board Meeting. All kinds of people to celebrate here, it's wonderful. I need to make a motion. At 3:23 today, Dr. Stevens forwarded me an email that she had received from the Commissioner of Education at 3:01. We were given a heads up at the last Board Meeting that the information that is now going to be shared was embargoed. Because of this, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move the Superintendent's report and the Chairman's report to fall under special items after the athletic update. I've made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Andy Witt. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Ms. Stidham? Very good. So we will be moving after the athletics update. It'll be Dr. Stevens' report and then I'll go ahead and do my report. Okay? Thank you very much. Special items, individuals to address the Board. I will read the policy related to this. I have it right here. There shall be a public comment period for each meeting with actionable items on the agenda, with the exception of teacher disciplinary hearings. Comments should be limited to topics listed on the agenda. The total public comment period shall be no more than 15 minutes. If an individual wishes to address the Board, he/she shall sign up on the form provided before the beginning of the Board Meeting to request time to speak. Each speaker will be given no more than three minutes. In our policy manual, this is Policy 1.404. Is there anyone who has signed up to speak? Seeing there's no one, we'll move on to the fun part, student celebrations. Dr. Stevens?
Yes, we have three different groups to celebrate tonight. We have cheerleaders, we have bowlers, and we have swimmers. So, students, when I call your name and you come forward, if you'll sit in this open area, there will be Board Members who are presenting you with a certificate, and I'm going to ask that you wait until all names are called, and then I will invite your coaches present as well, and we'll get some photographs. So first of all, for cheerleading, Telahoma City Schools District was honored to have 10 cheerleaders from East and West Middle Schools combined to reach All-American status. This honor, which is only achieved by the top 15% of participants in sponsored summer camps across the country, earned each of them an invitation to everybody's favorite place to perform at Walt Disney World Thanksgiving Parade Day in Florida. So I want to congratulate these cheerleaders, and as you hear your name, if you will come forward and stand here. Evelyn Carter, Addie Crater, Harper Hill, Lindley Jones, Maddie Martinez, Sophia Moore, Callie Murray, Paisley Northcutt, Aleah Pack, and Brianna Witham. And I would ask Coach Laura Lee Crownover and Emily Smith if you all would come forward, or if one of you is here, one of you come forward. And if you will give those extra certificates to the coach, we can make sure that our young ladies, our cheerleaders, get those. And I know Mr. Birdsong's probably going to take some photos, there may be others that want to take photos, but let's all smile. Cheer smile. Very good. Congratulations. Hooray, hooray. I would ask you all to do backflips, but I'm anxious that someone might get hurt. I would like to do a backflip, but we would really get hurt if that happened. Next, we have bowling, and we had something really special happen this year. The Telahoma High School Lady Wildcats Bowling Team finished the regular season undefeated. What did I say? They finished what? The Lady Wildcats made history this year by being the first Telahoma High School Bowling Team to play at the TSSAA State Tournament, as the THS Girls Team brought home the hard-earned runner-up trophy. They represented our school district well, displayed lots of grit, and we are super proud of their accomplishments. And so again, I will call this group forward, you will come up here until you're all called, and you will be getting some certificates, and then I will also welcome the coaches forward. Haley Byrne, Emily Hewitt, Ariana Hudgens, Rachel Mitchell, Christina Petty, Elizabeth Prater, and Olivia Williams. And I would like to welcome Coaches Derek Swiger and Matt Pilkington. And our Board Member will give you the extra certificates. I know we've got some bowlers who are working, and we have other evening commitments, but we want to give a special congratulations to this history-making team. Congratulations. I mean, they earned a strike in my book, okay? All right, yes, I'm here all night. Swimming! All right, six Telahoma High School Swim Team members competed in the Tennessee Interscholastic Swim Coaches Association State Championships. That's a lot to say earlier this month in Nashville. This talented group of swimmers represented TCS with accomplishments like meddling in individual events, breaking school records in relays, meeting qualifications for the Southeastern USA Swim, and high state rankings, and they are Riley Holder, Jessica Jones, Lexi Lester, Olivia Murphy, Will Nelson, and Ellie Ulan. And I would love to welcome Coach Wade Broatmarkel forward. Not here! Oh, womp, womp. Can we give you the certificates to take? Yes? Absolutely, all right. So let's get a picture here, come on down, everybody. Big smiles.
I love your shirt.
I do too, those are really cute. Yeah, that's awesome. Congratulations to these swimmers.
Thank you all for being here, and you are welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, and it will be fabulous. But we also know that you have swimming to do, and cheerleading to do, and things to do, so please feel free to exit now. Athletics update, Dr. Stevens?
Yes, so our Athletic Director is exactly where he should be. He is in Marshall County, where our boys basketball team is playing in the consolation game, so Dr. English is here this evening to give the athletics update. Dr. English?
This will be my first ever recording. Middle school report, first, both East and West Middle School Basketball Teams went to the TMSAA Area Tournament in Lawrenceburg. The West Girls won the area tournament and proceeded to return to Lawrenceburg in the sectional semifinal. The West Girls finished one game away from returning to the state tournament again. I understand they have several middle school swimmers who competed very well this winter in their competitions. The spring sports are in their preseason, and they will begin their regular season next week. We are currently seeking applications for the head coach of the Tallahassee Middle School Girls Soccer Program and the head coach of the TMS Football Program. The high school sport report. Our bowling teams competed very well this year, with our girls team reaching a historical level this season. Our girls finished state runner-up and nine-time defending champion. State runner-up two and nine-time defending champion. Coach Swiger and our Lady Bowlers have their state runner-up trophy proudly displayed in the THS Gem of Love. Our boys wrestling team also made history this year with our first state tournament trophy-finishing runner-up to Saudi Daisy in the state dual tournament. There are plans to make a duplicate trophy, so that one trophy stays at the Welsh Wrestling Center, and one trophy stays at the high school. We have one female wrestler and seven male wrestlers heading to the individual state tournament this week. I believe we will celebrate these wrestlers in March. Our high school swimmers set NPRs throughout this season, and we set some individual school records as well as school relay records along the way. Our girls basketball team won the regular season district title, maybe the first since the '70s. Zach and Coach Oliver did some research on that. They captured the district tournament championship last night. Our girls will host state powerhouse Upelman in the region quarterfinals this Friday at 7:00. Our boys are playing for third place in the district tournament this evening in Marshall County. Our boys finished in a four-way tie for second place in the regular season. Following the various tiebreakers, we ended up against the number-one seed, Lawrence County, in the semifinal. This Saturday, we'll be on the road to either Upelman or Livingston Academy in the region quarterfinals. Coach Oliver would like to express his thanks for allowing me to present this report.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. Okay, now this is the change in the agenda, and this will be the Superintendent's report. Dr. Stevens?
Yes, so as I mentioned in January when we last met, I was really hopeful to have been able to share this information with you at that time, but I did go over with you that school districts receive designations. They receive designations like exemplary, advancing, satisfactory, in need of, excuse me, marginal, and in need of improvement. So five designations, no letter grades, but designations. And the news came out today, the state embargoes that information. So I've known this information for about six weeks, and it has been very difficult not to shout from the rooftops of our progress and success. But tonight, I get to tell you that we are an advancing school district, which is so exciting! So exciting! I am over the roof! Okay, so as a matter of fact, I want y'all to watch a video.
The Tennessee Department of Education just released wonderful news about districts across the state. Each school district receives a designation, which is something I mentioned in January's school board meeting. A district can earn one of the following designations: exemplary, advancing, satisfactory, marginal, or needing improvement. Telahoma City Schools is proud to be an advancing school district. While happy with the designation, there is of course always room for improvement. It is important to lift up that this designation is based solely on 2023 data like TCAP results, graduation rate, and chronic absenteeism. This represents only one small piece of the educational puzzle. There is so much more about TCS that makes us an amazing school district, and quite frankly, an exemplary one. First and foremost, teachers are the difference makers for children, and we have first-rate educators in our district who work tirelessly to lead, guide, teach, challenge, and support our students. They influence and enrich the lives of our students every single day. TCS offers a wide range of educational opportunities for our students at all levels. Academically, we want to ensure our students are critical thinkers and problem solvers who are successful in life. Additionally, TCS offers essential and valuable experiences that positively impact our students' lives. Our career and technical education program allows students to explore career options and to learn valuable skills needed to thrive in their community and chosen field. Our fine arts programs are renowned throughout the state and nation, and Telahoma City Schools has consistently received awards and accolades for our successful fine arts programs and initiatives. TCS athletic programs are top-notch, with multiple teams and individuals winning state accolades year after year. Whether it's through academics, arts, athletics, or an array of options that the district offers, we want the best for our students. We are thankful for the partnership of our parents and community in this important educational journey. Our community is invested in our schools in so many ways. For example, we have CEO partnerships, the Telahoma Educational Foundation for Excellence, volunteer hours given, attendance at events, and supporting an array of programs, performances, and competitions, or even just speaking highly of our school district, so other people hear about the fantastic things happening across all of our campuses. At TCS, we challenge students today for a limitless tomorrow, and we ensure they are college and career-ready. We have a proven record of highly successful former students who are now excelling in the workforce. We have so many things to be proud of, and there's no way for me to name them all. We are certainly proud to be named an advancing district. We are proud to be a Level 5 district with the highest level of growth in our test scores. But what are we most proud of? Well, that's easy. We are most proud of our students and their commitment to learning and growing, as evidenced by our National Merit Scholars. We're proud of our teachers and their tireless efforts and dedication to a career where lives are changed daily. We're proud of our staff, who put students first, and we're proud of our families, who encourage, support, and value all that's a part of the TCS experience. Yes, we are proud of all things Telahoma City Schools.
So, what and how do you become an advancing district? What is included in that? Well, there are six areas that school districts are evaluated on. There are three success rates, all connected to TCAP. You have the 3-5 success rate, and TCAP, achievement and growth are averaged together. You look at all students, and then you look at specific subgroups of students. BHN, which is Black, Hispanic, Native American, economically disadvantaged, EL, and students with disabilities. EL is English language learners. So in each success rate, you're looking at those five groups, all and four subgroups. You have the 6-8 success rate, again, TCAP, achievement and growth average, same groups. You have the 9-12 success rate, which is TCAP. Now, again, TCAP is EOC. TCAP's the umbrella name for any and all assessments. WEDA is an assessment that EL students take, that's under TCAP. So everything's TCAP, if you will, the assessment umbrella. So your 9-12 success rate connects to EOC, again, achievement and growth average, same subgroups. Then the fourth item, so that's three, the fourth item is chronically absent students. That's K-12, K-12. And in looking at our data, I would say that's an area we want to shore up. Here's the challenge point for that. Getting students to school falls on the responsibility of whom? Sure, it's the parents, right? We are serving young people who are minors, they are young children needing to get to school. So that is something we are going to work on to encourage and celebrate positive attendance. We also, then, that's four measures so far, you heard, there's the fifth one, here it comes. It's the K-12 English Language Proficiency Assessment, again, under TCAP, this is called WEDA. So you understand, we're really rooted in test scores, test scores, right? And then the sixth measure is graduation rate. So those are the six things that every school system is evaluated on to determine what their designation is, be it exemplary, down to in need of improvement. And I have something else exciting to share. We have a school who has earned reward status. How about that? So an advancing district with a school that's earned reward status. Now what does that mean? Very similar to the district, and how the district is evaluated on all things testing, if you will. West Middle School, who is our reward school, was evaluated on four items. Number one was achievement results, straight achievement results. Number two is growth, growth results. Now remember, system has these things averaged, so at the school level, it's a little different. They also have chronically absent, that's of course for grade 6-8, and then they have that ALPA, the EL data, 6-8. So for a school, it's localizing, and it's four items. For a district, it's six, and it's putting measures together on an average rate. So we're really proud of West Middle School to be named a reward school. Now, the video that you shared or saw, that I shared, that's probably already in the hands of our employees and parents, because there's a personal email going to everyone with that video, because we are excited about it, and I know Mr. Birdsong's back there clicking away. It will be on all social media and our website, because we are proud to be an advancing district. But as you can tell, we are proud of way more things than that. That's one piece of the puzzle, just one piece. Questions?
I have some questions. You all have known for a long time how I feel about testing and its place, its important place. So if you'll just hang on with me. Does this designation include the breakfast, lunch, or summer lunch program? No. Does it include the employees who open doors and greet students in the morning, or help them safely into their car in the afternoon?
No, ma'am.
Does it include the creative classwork that teachers provide?
No.
What about the time spent with parents?
No, ma'am.
After-hours work that our teachers do on a daily basis?
No.
How about the elementary cross-country teams or clubs?
No, ma'am.
Does it include ROTC?
Well, no, but if our ROTC students take ASVAB, they are a part of the CCR data, which is 10% of the school grade. So, really tiny.
Somewhat. What about our athletic programs?
No, ma'am.
Field trips?
No, ma'am.
Incredible support of our parent community volunteers in our PTO programs?
No.
How about any of our booster clubs?
No.
Field trips?
No.
What about stellar fine arts programming throughout our entire district?
No.
How about our CTE programming?
No, however, in the CCR data, if they get an industry certification, that's a sixth of a 10% toward the school letter grade.
And we have increasing number of certifications right through...
Correct, yes, you heard Ms. Kinsey present, absolutely. How about competitions?
No.
CTE certifications, math contests?
No.
Esports competitions?
No.
What about all the scholarships that our graduates receive?
No, ma'am.
How many days a year do students attend school?
180 days.
How much time is spent taking this test?
That's a great question, that's a big answer, here we go. So the smallest amount of time, biology is an hour and 15 minutes out of 180 days, and that plays into a high school letter grade. Actually, it's kind of interesting, our high school testing times is the shortest of all. History is about an hour and a half out of 180 days that they're tested, and that score rolls into the school letter grade. Algebra's 1, 2, and geometry that are tested, they take two hours and 20 minutes for those assessments, again, out of 180 days of instruction. English 1 and 2 is the highest at the high school, those are about four hours of testing. When you get to the middle level, there's nine hours of testing at each grade level, 6, 7, and 8, and that testing is incorporated over the four subject matters that they're taking. At the elementary level, we start with third grade with five hours of testing, remember, 180 minutes of that is what's determined to retain a student, all rooted in test data. In fourth grade, we have five hours of testing, in seventh grade, we have, in fifth grade, we have seven hours of testing. Fifth grade's the only elementary grade that has all four subjects tested, third and fourth only have ELA, math, and science. So essentially, you're looking at a day, give or take, with middle school being the highest, with nine hours out of 180 days of learning.
Very, very good. Were you proud of our teachers and our students yesterday, before you knew about this?
I have been proud of our students and teachers since I arrived here, June 1st, 2020, and I was actually proud of them before I got here, with hopes that you all would bring me here. Yes, but yes.
Very good. You all go ahead, I mean, I'm sure you have questions, I can spit off a ton.
One question I have is, just for my own clarification, because I've been asked this by several people lately, is that they're asking me about our district receiving a letter grade. And can you, I mean, can you just clear that up? Like, we receive, according to what you just said, we receive a designation.
Well, that's correct. The system does not receive a letter grade. Now, what someone could be doing, or trying to surmise, let me figure out how to grade, maybe you could take those five things, exemplary, advancing, satisfactory, marginal, in need of improvement, and you could say, okay, exemplary's an A, and on and on, and if that were the case, then you would know advancing's a B, right? But we don't get a letter grade. The other thing that you could possibly try to do, and I think sometimes we try to equate things, you might look at our schools. Schools are the only ones that get letter grades, that law passed in 2016. However, it was supposed to go in play shortly after that, we had all these bumps within the State Department, and this was the first year. And let me add a caveat to that, because I think it's really important that you understand this. What schools knew to be a part of the letter grade last spring actually wasn't what the letter grade was this year. That was changed, and if you remember, the Commissioner, the new Commissioner was going out and asking for input, asking for information, and so for schools, it's just strictly test data, the schools don't necessarily have chronically absent, that's not a part of the letter grade at all, that's a part of designation, so it's a lot to kind of take in. So this was the first year, and we had about three weeks' notice to know what we were actually going to get a grade on, so that's a little unfortunate, but you might take those grades and say, okay, if you have two on this end and two on this end, four in here, I'm going to say it's a C. You can't actually do that. Why? Let's say one school, let's say that gets a B, has 600 or 500 testers, and let's say a school that gets a D has 30 testers, can you actually average those? Well, no, of course not, right? Your N count's totally different, not to mention the subject matter, the academic standards, they're completely different, and you just heard the testing times, how very different they are. So there is no way to equate a letter grade to a system. It's not in law, it does not happen, but I can see how people attempt to mash up information to create a grade, but there is not one.
Okay, I see. Yeah.
We just got back from the Legal and Legislative Conference this past week, and this was a big topic, you know, letter grades, and they were even saying that there is now a bill being passed, and there's options for schools to opt out of it. And then they list this as whole things, all these things that they're wanting to change. I mean, it's like, you think you're on target for one thing, and they change 1,000 things before you get your head wrapped around, what, okay, what are we doing now? That was really eye-opening to me to see how much, the amount of bills that are submitted all around these letter grades, school systems, we had people coming in for us to ask questions for, and they finally just had to stop questions, because so many school districts were irate with this whole system. So, I mean, it's something I think we all have to kind of wrap our heads around, but I think the second we try to understand it, we think we understand it, they're going to change it again.
Here's a question I get, that I'll just ask proactively, because I get it all the time. Do dual enrollment students or AP students take these assessments? And the answer is no, they don't.
So they don't factor into our...
No, the only way they factor in, remember that group of six for college and career readiness, that is 10% of a school's grade, and there's six items in that item that weighs 10%? AP is in there, ACT is in there, industry cert, ASVAB. Let me see, I know I jotted notes, because I had a feeling you might want some of this information. ASVAB, can you, Greg, can you remember? Industry cert, AP, oh, dual credit and dual enrollment, there they are. Those, you're welcome. I had to get that brain just going. So those six items count for college and career readiness, which counts for 10% of the grade for the high school, so it's a tiny, tiny little subset, and that's the only way that those students count.
Okay, I know, like, it's my understanding, excuse me, that at Telahoma High School, everyone takes the ACT as a junior, is that, is that right? Like, everyone does?
Yes.
Okay, so does everybody, do all the other schools, they all?
Yeah, so here, that's another thing that I've heard about, and questions I field is related to ACT. About the 2015-16 school year, Tennessee mandated essentially all students must take the ACT. At that point, they were able to provide data, and what I can tell you, because I have all the composite scores 2015 to 2023, they range from 19 to 21, with one year being a 22, meaning the ACT scores have been fairly consistent. Now, what I will say from an honest review is, the last few years, there's been a steady decline. What that's connected to, is it learning loss? I'm not quite sure, is it the fact that colleges aren't leaning on it as much? So that happened in 2015-16, prior... So that happened in 2015-16. Prior to that, ACT was offered. And I suspect we have people here who either took it or had children who took it. Yeah, all right. Typically, it was given on a Saturday.
Yes.
Okay, it was roughly 25% of your class. It was students who were definitely college-bound, okay? The state gave no data on that. Systems locally might take the scores because you always have access, right? So they could average those composites and say, hey, as a system, we had X composite or Y. And it probably would have been quite high. Why? What did I just tell you? Who was taking it? College-bound, yes. So there's that difference. So when I look at the data, when all students became mandated to take it, and by the way, there was another mandate put forth in 2017 that linked this requirement to graduation. So they did it for a couple of years and then they added another mandate saying, yes, you have to take it, but to graduate, you must take it, right? So mostly our juniors take it for the first time. We offer it during the day. Everybody has access, but they must take it. Every student wants to graduate. Do you see the difference there in why there might be some confusion around ACT? Maybe some historical scores and information to contemporary times. Does that make sense? Yeah. Yeah, there's just things that have changed over time. Yeah. Okay, anyone else?
You mentioned merit finalists. And you go into the entrance where the flagpole is.
The wall of excellence, yes.
All those perfect ACTs and all those perfect ACTs and all those merit finalists.
And a Rhodes Scholar.
That they're not counted in the testing program is hurts Tallahassee. We've got, we got.
Yeah, I think it's important that everyone understand what is connected to this system. Now, at the high school, their success rate specifically, there's another new rule. See, there's always new rules happening. So it is now the sophomore cohort is what they call it. So it will be algebra and, and Dr. Boone, you may have to correct me here, algebra one, English two?
Algebra one, integrated math one.
Yeah, so we, the two that we have are algebra one and English two. We don't have integrated maths, but yeah. So now that's also changing, so it's getting real specific. Whereas the district in, in that outcome gets all 912. The school itself actually gets a cohort much smaller than that tested group. And to give you an idea, I mean, you have, I made some notes, let's see. In terms of students, I just want to tell you, let's see, where do I have that? Oh, I thought I did. Maybe I didn't. Oh, yes, I did. Here's an example. I'm going to use two different examples. Let me start the high school because I was just right here. So THS has an enrollment of 1,100. I'm, I'm looking basically back, right? Because also remember this, everything we're talking about is from last school year. Pay attention to what month we're in, right? But anyway, okay, so they have an enrollment of 1,100. So when they look at their achievement, the number of students included for science is 150 students. How many enroll, how many count, okay? For social studies, 300 students. For math, which has algebra one, algebra two, geometry, this is your biggest group, 870, big group, right? English, you've got 615. So at no point do you have full school, right? Because it's, you, you don't have all these other courses that we offer. We, we don't just offer biology for science, right? Do you see what I'm saying? So it's very selective and I'm going to use, I'm going to use Robert E. Lee. I'm using, two of you are sitting right here. So Robert E. Lee has over 500 students, right? And I'm going to last year, we still have over 500 students. I could use that from this year. But for TCAP, for the achievement part, 240 were, were included. And they have something where they have this, and each school does in their school letter grade. So it's 50% achievement, 40% growth, and then 10% is the bottom 25% growth. So in that indicator, at Robert E. Lee, that was 18 to 40 students. And then the growth measure was 173. You see, so you have this large enrollment, but when you get down to assessment and testing, you have this smaller set of students that you're looking at. So at no point do you have all the students, except with ACT because that changed in law.
With some of our students, just because Mary's here, I'll say Robert E. Lee. A student is maybe in the 99th percentile. Well, where do you go as far as area of growth?
So, yeah, so what you're getting at is it can be very difficult to get growth from a student who is a high performer because there, there isn't a way to get above that. And that is a challenge point and we have that across the district.
Which had a five.
But we had a five.
That's a challenge.
Yes.
We still have a five.
And do you all remember, what number reflects one year's growth? Three. So three, every, any school district that's getting a three, that, that's what you expect, one year's growth. Well, what our district did is got the highest rating, which says it's significantly evidence of significantly more growth than one year. That's taking all your students. Because remember, when you get the district results, we're blessed, we're getting all, right? Three through. So when it's a school, it's tighter, it's smaller. Because when you think about it, growth at elementary is just two grades for five. Third doesn't have a growth, right? They're your baseline achievement. Great questions, great questions.
So how do we, to the community, how do we discuss or talk or how to explain more? You get one set of scores saying you're this and then we get this saying that. You could go, if you want to be a, it's a school system, you can go this way if you want, before you go this way. How do you make everyone see the whole picture? Because you can't compare them because they're not, they're not the same thing.
So, yes, achievement is one thing and that's a true proficiency compared to the academic standards on that assessment, right? So if you think back to third grade, let's just use that ELA portion because we've talked about it so many times. The state had a 40% proficiency rate on, on the first blush. Tallahassee City had 42, right in line with the state. That's your true achievement. Then we know we had exemptions and we had retail, we had all the things that got us closer to an 80%, right? So that's true. Achievement is one specific thing. Growth is aligned to how is a student growing, sort of closing that, that gap over time? Or what, what are they gaining over time? It's, it's like running a race, running a race. Are, are you running faster than your neighbor? Are you running with your neighbor? How are you doing? So they are two very different things. I think part of it is just like we do here. You know, in August, we did, Dr. Boone, you did a presentation on all of our achievement data from 2023. Dr. Boone, you came back in November and you did an update on growth. I think this is a very important place where that information is shared. Principals, you all talk about your data, I presume, with families, with, I see all the time, right? So it's that constant communication of educating. But the truth is, this is kind of hard sometimes to grab a hold of because it's changing. There are unique parts and you have to be really in the weeds of it to get a semblance of understanding. If you have questions, Dr. Boone's a great person to ask, director of curriculum and instruction and assessment, great person to ask. I, I would hope that you would ask me if you've got a question. Anybody can ask a question. Principals, ask them questions. If we don't know the answer and you stump us, we're not going to be afraid to say, we're going to get back to you on that. That's a great question. I'm not quite sure. So I think we're doing that and we've been doing that, right? Sharing the updates as they come. I would have loved to have shared this the moment I knew a result. But with everything, it's embargoed to a point. Achievement data, we couldn't share it until it was unembargoed. Growth data, we couldn't share it until it was unembargoed. Same with this information. So we have to kind of piece it out. Something else that I, that people may be thinking about is, is how do teachers utilize data? Like, how, how does this work for them? And that's tricky because in a way, it's an autopsy. Right? Thank you for the giggles. You get it. Okay, I appreciate that because it's, it's passed and everybody's gone. And now I come back and I don't have data until I come back. Where are my seniors? They're gone. They're in college. They're at work, right? They're at TCAT. So in some ways, it's tricky, but what can a teacher do? It's valuable to look at it and say, okay, in this, say, English, here are some standards. Because they will get a standards analysis and I can see some standards by which, maybe I didn't do so well. Is it me? Was it the cohort of students? And so teachers will track that over time because you don't want to jump and make decisions right away. What they can also use is, okay, who's sitting in my class right now? I wasn't their teacher, but I have their data. Maybe if I analyze their data, it will help me. Now, remember, this is a data point. We use this along with many others.
And when do we get, when does the school system get this data, this, this one?
So achievement data, our teachers had in the fall, followed by growth. They had the achievement data first. We shared it with you in August. No, not before the school year started, but shortly thereafter. But it's just quick scores.
You start your school and then all of a sudden you get this data and you're like, oh, now I've got to figure out what I have to go back and correct or fix or modify. It's not as easy as this is what I need to fix right now before I start this year. I think people need to understand that's what teachers have to do. I mean, they're constantly, constantly, I'm, I'm speaking for myself and I'm also speaking for the people I'm a teacher with. They're constantly looking at where is this student and where do I need to take them? Why are they not growing or why are they growing? What can I, what can I change within my classroom or they're collaborating constantly? And I think that that's important, that we're not getting these scores at the very beginning. You're waiting and waiting and waiting. You may have gone two months into the school year, sometimes longer, before you get, just like this whole third grader teaching, we wait and wait and wait, you know, for things that, that are sometimes out of our control, you know, it's out of teachers' control. So I think it's important to know that teachers, sometimes we're, we're on a path, we're starting school and they're like, eek, stop. Now we've got to back up and go back because now this data shows us something different that we weren't, we weren't aware before we had the stuff.
Well, and there's also with the state, and as a former employee of the state, I know how that, how that works as well. There are so many changes and with, with each administration that comes in every four to eight years, usually eight, it starts all over. And then in the past 10 years, I guess, we've had the pandemic in the middle. And it's just, I think it's hard for, I know it's hard for the educators. And it's so, it's as far as like the community members, I'm sure it's. And the way things do change, it's hard to keep up with and understand. I know that sometimes, I know we were at a board training years ago and they were rolling out something new. It may have been the, the new testing. And the, who, who the representative there couldn't answer the questions. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's so convoluted and difficult to understand sometimes. But I appreciate you explaining it the way you have.
And also, I understand it's important for us to remember that historically, Tallahassee City Schools and as a school board, we have said, we know we have to do the testing. It's mandated and we have to do the testing and there's so much riding on it. But we, we want you to think about so much more than just that testing. And we, we have, we have said that. And I think our teachers and administration need to know that, you know, we have said that. Like, we backed you up that, you know, the, the whole child is very important to us as a system. Yes, we have to follow state mandates. We have to do the things. But that, I would say, I'm thrilled with our designation. I'm thrilled that we, it's better than it was. And, you know, I think that's, that is excellent. But it, it does not change for me what I thought about what was happening in our schools every day.
Right. That, that leads me to a question. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Some of you are parents now, have been parents of children, you know, in the grandparents, et cetera. What phrases have you either said yourself about the school system? Or what have you heard? When, when you hear about Tallahassee City Schools, either what has come out of your mouth as you're speaking? Or what, what do you hear? What are the things that come? I'd love to hear from each of you, actually.
Well, as, as for me, as, as a parent, as a stu-, well, parent, parent. And then my husband and I, products of this school system, children, grandchildren. I can say that, I can even speak for, I'll just go with my daughter here. Wherever she went, she was so far more advanced, you know, than, just say, she took some summer classes at Mallow. I mean, but that's what I hear and that's what I experienced, is that we are, we are just that school system. And we're the whole package and we're not just a test score. We are, I mean, look at our Ivy League graduates that we have. Look at, like Pat said, look at our merit scholarship recipients. It's just, I just think we're, and then you look at, and I think, I think I'm correct when I say this, if I can remember correctly. 15% of our students are tuition paying, right? 15%, maybe 20% at the, at the high school. Is that right? Is that still right?
We have 440 tuition paying students, so, yeah.
That want to come.
Oh, yeah, from seven different counties.
They want to come, they pay.
They pay to come, yes. So, and, and drive. So I would say we, we're, we just have that reputation. And, and the overall with the extracurricular and the, the academics and the social. And I just think, and, and the world is changing. And our community is changing. Our demographic has changed since I was here. I mean, since I was a student, my children were students. And we have to change and accommodate, in my opinion. And I think we do very well at that and I'm proud of, of this school system. So that's all I've got to say.
Let's see, I, well, I spend, of course, my working day out of the district down in Lynchburg. And so probably a lot of, a lot of my discussions with people there is, is kind of that. You know, a lot of them would like their kids to come to Tallahassee City Schools. So, so I hear, hear that a lot. Plus, you know, of course, my wife and I both are graduates. Two of my children are graduates. One, jury's still out whether she's naked or not. No, she's, she's on, she's on track. But, but yeah, but I mean, I have a choice where to send my kids. This is where, this is where it is. Big fan.
I would say the same thing. Both of our daughters graduated from Tallahassee and felt like they were very prepared when they went to college, that they were prepared to do the coursework there and have chosen to come back here and raise their children here and for their children to attend. And I have to say that when you're a parent, you know, you're just so busy and you're doing all the things. And as a grandparent, watching your grandchildren in school is a little bit different. And I can really enjoy it, like I can see what's going on with them. And I, I mean, I just could not ask for teachers to be more caring about each one of them individually in what they need. And, and open and, you know, they're, when, when my daughters and son-laws have a question, they feel like they can go and ask that question and get a good answer and even help with some tutoring. And I just appreciate that. They go above and beyond. So that's what I get. And, and I get that response from people too. I have a lot of people that give me. Now, are there areas where Tallahassee City Schools, you know, can improve? Yes, obviously. There's lots that we can do and we want to do that. We, we want to be ever improving. But the feedback that I get from people is, you know, appreciation for our staff.
I'm actually going to jump in a little bit because, because Gigi is, you know, with, with her daughter. You know, my daughter has her daughter as a teacher. And, you know, and one thing she's done, her kind of going with stuff outside of this, you know, the whole child type thing. My daughter, you know, took her classes, probably never really had much of a desire for health type of, you know, occupations or anything like that up until she had Katie. And, and she's working on her CNA designation right now, going through that program, loving it. You know, and, and, and so, and Katie was, you know, a direct influence on that. I mean, that just kind of shows, you know, that she's going to leave school with, I don't know if she'll become a nurse or not, but it's opened up a, a door, an opportunity for her. That thing's phenomenal.
Thank you.
I am a graduate of THS. I had three children graduate from there and the level of education they got is far superior to mine. Some of that was my fault. Some of it is a lot. But written expression, what was expected of them was way more than what's expected of me as far as term papers, projects, written essays, no, 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 absolutely no comparison.
as far as term papers, projects, written essays, no, no, absolutely no comparison. And I, I know I'm beating a dead horse, but again, where we're strongest hurts us. There's a year not too long ago where we had five merit finalists. And I checked the five largest high schools in our area and they combined for one. We had five, one of the other five schools had one and four of them had zero. But our five didn't count in the year in testing. And to me, it's not fair to where that, that we're punished for our best. Enough said.
Well, and I was, I was blessed to be born and raised here and graduated. I knew when we had children, we were going to bring them back here because that was important to me. And my, I feel like my sons have had a phenomenal educational experience, not only in the classroom with academics. They've been able to do choir, they've been able to do art, they've been able to do sports, they've been able to do DECA. I mean, all kinds of other things that add on top of not just what they got in the classroom. And I think that is what makes a whole student. But even beyond my own children, the other kids that I say are my children, our special needs population. I'm telling you right now, not every district offers the services, especially that Tallahassee City Schools does. And I want to thank Dr. Wilkinson too. You run a great program, April Renned as well. We're blessed, we're blessed in Tallahassee. And that's why a lot of people want their children here because we try. I mean, I know from being in that classroom, you do everything you can to meet whatever need that child has beyond just academics, because sometimes you got to, you got to fool with the other things. And academics is going to be over here because you can't even address academics until you get other things under control. And that's something that I think Tallahassee City School does really, really well and we're blessed. And that's why you'll hear a lot of, a lot of parents want their children to attend Tallahassee City Schools that have special needs. And we're, we're blessed from that area.
Yeah, and I compare it, a lot of what has already been said. I love Tallahassee City Schools, it's the reason why I'm here. I am blessed to have four children attending Tallahassee City Schools. And my kids come with some very unique needs. They're not your, your typical student. And they're typically the students that I worry about the most, the ones who aren't the national merit finalists, the students who kind of either fall in the middle or are struggling and need that extra help. And I think Tallahassee does an amazing job with those students. It's why we're here, it's why my kids are here. The, the, the teachers are dedicated and caring and that is obvious as a parent. And yeah, I, I'm grateful to be here and that my kids are here.
My kids are four years out and they're doing fine, so we're not going to talk about them. Or they were doing fine when I last spoke to them. But kind of my issue with the whole testing thing is I do believe that it is important. I do believe it's important that we teach the standards. I do believe it is important that there is an alignment of curriculum and scope and sequence. And I believe we are doing that. And I'm, I know that all of that changes that occurred do not just happen overnight. That, that's learning a new thing with a new high quality curriculum. It will in the end be wonderful. But when you're in the middle of it, the thing, when I was teaching, that drove me crazy, that I loved at the same time was that big old satchel of books and all the enrichment activities and everything. It was like, oh, because it's so much work to learn before you can, you're ready to teach it. It's tremendous. It takes a few years and we're in the middle of that. And, and our teachers are doing a great job, but, but it's, it's really, it was really for me, double the work. Initially, it was double the work. And so I, I want, I want it to just be a healthy part of what we think about. And, and I don't want it to go too far. The issue that I have always had with this test is how many of you have taught? Were any of your classes the same? None, none of them. I, I could have, one of my classes could have just struggled with fractions. So I didn't get any feedback back. I knew what their struggle was, right? I mean, all teachers, you know who knows their multiplication tables, you know which numbers they know. It's unreal how much you know about them. But, but we're getting feedback back. It's, the year is almost over. That does not benefit you. I guarantee you, most of our teachers don't have, have classrooms that are maybe even similar to what they had before. Can they learn from the data? Yes, because we have, let's see, 35, 30, 20 something. We have this many years, just these three, of experience that know how to interpret that data and help it be useful. But it's just this, it's just this. That's not even talking about the 800 years that y'all have. And up here too, Susan's laughing, but she's right there with them. It's not even talking about you all, just think about the principles that we have and their level of experience. They are working every day to be supportive of their staff and interact with students to, to help us be better. So what are we doing to be better? What are we not doing to be better? That's what I wish somebody would tell us. What are you not doing? Because in my opinion, we're doing it all and extra and extra. We're doing the third grade, learn your multiplication facts, banana split, and you get all three of the ice creams, you get the whipped cream, you get the nuts, you get the cherries and the sprinkles. That's what our people are doing. If I did not believe that, I wouldn't be sitting here. I just wouldn't, I don't have to. I'm incredibly passionate about it. I know it annoys, annoys the you-know-what out of people, but I can't help it. It just means so much to me. And one more time, do school districts in Tennessee receive letter grades?
They do not receive letter grades.
And why? Why would they not receive a letter grade?
There's really no way to configure a letter grade for a system. You have a designation and there is a definition to what that designation is. You can't equate existing school letter grades, you can't do the math. It's not the same. You don't have the same numbers of testers, you don't have the same subjects, you don't have the same time tested. There's no way to do it, you can't. But the state doesn't have a grade for a system.
Okay. I know they gave school grades, I understand that. I just want to make sure about the design. So, so our designation is what?
Advancing.
Advancing. So we improved over last year.
Yes.
Now, I'm, I'm as excited about the PA this year as I was last year. My enthusiasm has not changed. I'm proud of everyone, I know they're working hard, but, but that designation doesn't change the way I feel about what is happening for our students. And thank you, is there, do any of y'all have anything else? Anything? There was something else that we did at the legal and legislative. It was very eye-opening, very eye-opening, because the two legislators that were there are really hardcore school designations, all those things. Boy, had they changed their tune this year. System after system was standing up and they're like, we have some schools that are D's. What, what does that mean? What, what does that do to our people? What does that do to our community? Not districts that are D's, schools. What are we supposed to do with that? Our teachers are working so hard. They talked about the algebra, the algebra two thing, that that's, they're questioning that. Now, whether that's going to continue. They did talk about potentially changing how we're receiving these designations. How many days was it before you received anything? None of us knew, right? None of us were told anything. How many days before you received that designation, did the commissioner let you know how that was going to be configured?
So for the district designation, that's similar. So that did not change. School letter grades is what changed. And that was just a few weeks before those school letter grades came out. Because all those listening tours happened this fall. And we went to Shelbyville, some of us, Dr. Dillahay joined me there to provide some feedback. So we only had a few weeks to know. And obviously, when it's rooted on previous data, there, there's nothing you can do to impact or influence that end result. But for the district designation, that is still the same. And the reward school, that is still the same.
And in talking about the testing, at the legislative conference last week, they talked about, they were asking them questions about the voucher, you know, voucher bills and all that. They're going to, they're talking about how now they're going to hide the voucher bill in a big bill. And, you know, Amy's going to, I think is going to talk about that, but how they're going to hide it. But they said, are all, are private schools going to be held to the same standard as public schools if they receive voucher money? And so they have no answer for that. They're like, they're stammering up there, you know, and they can't, they don't know what they're going to say. And then they start to say how they really think that we probably should just remove some of this testing.
Yes, yeah.
Like that's their answer now is like, let's back up and let's remove some of the testing. So it makes it easier, I guess, for private school? I don't know, but it was, I mean, you just got, you could, one person would say one thing and one person would say somebody else and nobody really knew.
Exactly. It was very interesting that within that voucher bill, they were throwing out all kinds of stuff that would appeal to people so that it's more likely paying 80% of the insurance. I mean, it was all kinds of stuff that they were throwing out that's going to be part of it. And Amy, as that moves along, Amy will share with us, maybe Ben from TSBA said that he thought that they were going to have to come out with something into, within two weeks. If they didn't get it out within two weeks, it was going to be too late. So that would be next week. So we'll be watching and Amy will share with us, hopefully in March. It might be April, but about what they're thinking about. So it's, it's really difficult to be there and hear the people that are making these decisions for all of you.
Yes.
So, when so much time and so much worry is put into it. And, and how are we going to be successful? How are our children going to be successful? And what are we going to look like? And, and to hear them be like, you know.
And one of the changes that they, that they're trying to put in this bill to make it more palatable for people is they're going to say, well, in order to qualify for the voucher, you have to be in a failing school.
A failing school.
Failing school. And the child has to be two grade levels behind, okay? So they're trying to make it more palatable, like, oh, okay, well then I could probably vote for that bill because, you know, that's, that poor child is in this failing grade. But that just gets their foot in the door. Yeah, because then they can change it.
They can put all they want in the voucher bill, up to including a new high school for every district. And I promise you, TSBA not support if it's got vouchers.
Right. So you're just going to have to really watch it because it's, they're, they're, they're putting in inside something else. And trying to tease you a little bit with something that makes you think, oh, okay, like, you know.
That would be helpful.
I think that would be helpful.
Anyhow, so good. I'm so, I appreciate everybody, I appreciate all of your feedback. And, and I think that we all agree that we were proud of our, our system yesterday and last night and earlier today, and, and we're still so very proud. And, but it, but it does feel good
Yes.
to move up with our distinction. And I think we'll just go with that. Thank you, thank you, excellent.
Thank y'all.
Okay. Now it's going to be me. Y'all have heard from me a lot, but you're going to hear from me again. Okay, so I have one of the questions that we have been, that has been asked and asked of more than just me, asked of other board members, is about employees that we have hired. And so I didn't know hers was going to come out today. So it just, this kind of goes hand in hand, but I did not know this was going to happen. So I was just ready to do mine. And I appreciate all those that, that put input into this. I, I want to make it very clear. You will see on here that in 20, this is from 2223 to 2324, we hired six, we, we created six new administrative positions. We hired six licensed educators. And we hired four new support role positions, okay? If you, I had to go back and look and we looked and I talked to Dr. Stevens about this. We, in January of 23, and that didn't include all of us because Beth didn't come on until April, but in January of 23, we had our board retreat. And at that time, Dr. Stevens, along with her team, had submitted some positions for us to consider. Remember, our fine arts coordinator was one of them. An additional EA at each building. None of those passed us at that point. It's not that, y'all, we want, we wanted all this, we're all raising our hand for everything. Yes, we want everything. We cannot have everything. Too bad. Sir, we were going to raise the base for the certified starting pay. That was a yes, we, we did that. Assistant principals actually at that point did not, it did, assistant principals did. The HR, the HR position did not. The CTE position at the high school did. The data coordinator did not, much to Andy's chagrin. We moved the classified salary scale to 20 years. We voted down a facilities director, we voted down full-time fine arts director. We voted down librarians, a school psychologist and a school middle school teacher. In February, at our board meeting, we approved the CTE position and the four APs position. Okay, so those were administrative positions. And there, there also is an email that was shared that Mick Scheran and he wouldn't care because he said we could, we could share it. He, he feels like we were far behind in making the decision to add those positions. And I think we would all agree. In fact, today I had a conversation with a man who was incredibly assertive in his speech and talk about Tallahassee City Schools. And he, and I said, if I have anything to apologize for, it's that we waited so long to get our elementary schools those APs. And he asked me, why do you think that was? And I said, I'm sure it was funding. I mean, having Essar dollars to do some of the work and it freed up some funds to give us time to prepare for, for taking them on in the future. So we did add those. In June of 23, we had our retreat and we talked about a TVA middle school teacher, a school psychologist, a data coordinator and an HR assistant. And I'll never forget our finance person's reaction to the data coordinator. And what was that, Andy, that you said? Do you remember?
I think I probably said it paid for itself.
Yes. And Dr. Stevens has it?
Absolutely.
Because you all remember, we have different funding formula now. We were with BEP and now we're with TESA. And it is important to, what, what is that term?
So the coding is critical
Coding.
for the unique, unique learning needs. If they have characteristics of dyslexia. And of course, there's some rule and law change related to characteristics with dyslexia. You must be coded in your SIS, but you also have to have an ILPD in your software program, the TN pulse that the state has. If you don't have both, you don't actually get that funding, right? So this person is watching every coded item, verifying, double checking. I received a, a letter from the state a few weeks ago and it showed, it compared every unique learning code. So every director would have received this. And it showed in some, we had like grown 40% or, and I was like, oh, you know, that's surprising. And it was four or five categories. Or in one we dropped and I thought, oh my word, that's significant. So I immediately reached out to our data coordinator, sat down and met with her, went over every line item. She went back and checked, wrote me back on each point. And this is something I'm going to share in more detail with finance committee, just so you can see how that's working, how it's accurate coding. See, we have someone who's watching, how has, what is this student, what are their needs? How are they coded here? Do they require a plan over here? Does it exist? Uh-oh, it doesn't. There's coordination with our director of special ed, our director of curriculum instruction assessment, so many people to ensure our nutrition director, to make sure our coding of students is correct there. That person for sure has paid for herself. Would you agree, Hank? For sure. So your words are.
You were right, Andy.
Good.
You were right.
I knew it.
Yeah, you knew, you knew it.
That's why y'all voted it down the first time and I was saying we really needed it.
Right, right.
I will also say, I have had superintendents ask me for that job description. So I've been sharing it because I've been talking about it, what it's actually done for us and for accuracy and coding. Because the funding model has changed and you have to move to meet that funding model. So that was.
And can you correct me if I'm wrong, but when we had BEP funding, was it based on coding like that? As extreme?
Coding, but not in the same way. So it was a resource-based model. So it was still rooted in ADM, how many students do you have? How many CTE students do you have? But it's, it wasn't the same in terms of the specifics of one child because of the weights that are now involved. So it's different. So special ed coding was there in BEP. So special ed coding was there in BEP, but again, it was a resource-funded model, not a student-based funded model. So a little different. Yep.
Right. So in June, we approved the school psychologist. And in August, the data coordinator. And that was, that was all of us. In August of twenty-three, is that correct? We also approved the RE lead teacher. In March of twenty-three, sorry, I don't have all this done correctly. We approved the Virtual Academy middle school teacher when Dr. English was there. And I think she is just doing a fabulous job. So anyhow, I think that it is, the, the reason, and I've been asked, and some of you have been asked, you know, well, we've had hired teachers, but we're, people are thinking that we didn't hire teachers. And then I actually had one of the teachers that we hired say, I've heard I've not been hired. And I'm like, no, you're hired. And she's like, well, good, because I'm working every day. But anyhow, I think that it, it is, it's good to see that we have, although it, it does feel like, wow, you're, you're administrative heavy. We were way administrative liked. We, we actually were behind. I don't know another school system that doesn't have assistant principals. Do y'all? No, I, I mean, I don't, I don't. And we, when we would go places and we would talk about not having assistant principals, they were shocked. So I think that we were, I, I would, I will agree that we were late with that. And I'm so thankful that we have that now because that, that is another support system for our principals as well as our teachers.
Well, I mean, when you
Safety issue, it's so much.
And when you have evaluations and all the administrative part of it, that doesn't account for all of the student, face-to-face with student, parents thing. And of course, all the things that just happen in a day that a, a principal, and then when a principal's out. So that was really, to me, way overdue.
And just, if you don't mind, I step in for a second? Of course, yes. Thank you for bringing up evaluations. I wanna just really crystallize that for just a minute. So, Dr. English, how many, how many teachers do you have? How many, uh-huh, how many licensed staff? Okay. So sixty-eight teachers at the high school. Those teachers either need four observations per year or eight. So think about how much time that takes to be in a room. Multiply that out, right? And then you have
How long's an observation?
It will range. Give us your shortest minutes. Give us your longest. Do you ever stay longer?
Sure.
Okay. So there's a minimum that's required in Project Coach. But some people sit and sit and sit because they want to ensure they've captured as much information as they can. You can always go longer, right? Is there pre and post? Like pre?
Post.
Pre and post meetings with teachers?
Post.
Post. Yes. There is feedback in TAV. So they have to go back and then they have to align what they saw to a rubric. They also have to have a healthy coaching conversation. All of this takes an extraordinary amount of time. And you're right, in the midst of that, you are serving students, you are serving parents, you are serving guests, you are managing facilities, you are managing crises, you are So having two administrators at the elementary level, it has been pure magic for our children, for our teachers and staff and our families. And my heart rests easy now that I know there is, as you said, there's always one there, right? And we have changed how we do meetings to make sure we encourage. We've had to pay extra for training to make sure the training can happen two days in a row because we are committed to providing an environment where we have an administrator present. I think that, that's great.
And can I speak real quick? You know, back to the evaluations, that is all changed. Used to, you could have maybe one, two, or three total, maybe one evaluation per year. So now you're looking at eight per teacher? I mean, I don't think people realize that, that, you know, when the state changes things or just, you know, it's, it's changed a lot.
Well, and speaking of that, one of the things that the legislators did talk about was removing some of those requirements. I mean, they're trying to make nice. There is no doubt about it. So moving some, I mean, that, they were not, they knew they were not in friendly territories. They were trying to make nice with saying, there is a lot of talk about removing some of these requirements. And so we'll see what comes of that, but it's gonna be interesting, it's gonna be interesting to see. But I think that education is incredibly confusing, even for those of us that have done it a long time. I spent two years with Dan before I even ran for school board and I was working at Robert E. Lee. Two years, I don't, I can't tell you how many times I met with him. And when I got on the school board, I was, I was like, what? I mean, I, I, it was really very difficult. So just to look at budgets, just to look at things and be able to interpret those are difficult. The great thing about schools is they're open. Our things are not done in the dark. We have a sunshine law and that applies to everything that we do. So people can ask questions. You can't just come in here because Hank, I'm sure you're not just in there doing nothing. But you, you can definitely call and make appointments. I mean, it's, I do. I mean, I, I meet with, you know, lots of people and make appointments. I have lots of questions, way too many questions. And, but, but please, if there's things that you're concerned about or, or questions that you have about anything, please feel free to reach out to someone. And if you wanna just reach out to me first or, or one of the board members first, that's fine too. I mean, we can tell you who to see or who to visit or, a lot of times, we can, we can answer questions. But the next thing I wanna do is move to another slide. And this actually isn't anything new, you all. This is on our website, but I think it is so super important because even though, this is called the circles of support. And this is what our admin and leadership, leadership did. And, and I love it. Because what do we, why are we even here, any of us in any way, shape, or form? Students.
Students.
Students. So you may directly or indirectly impact students. But every single employee that we have is directly or indirectly impacting our students every single day. And so I think this just shows the importance of everyone. And it, it's this group together that has created Tallahassee City Schools. And, and it's a place that, you know, we're all proud of. And I honestly, I told Dr. Stevens this before this school year started. I told, I'm sure I told a lot of people, that I tell a lot of people stuff that don't wanna hear at the Bread aisle and Kroger's or whatever. I was so excited about this school year. I felt like we're past COVID. We have all of our ducks in a row. We, I, I mean, I'm so super excited about all of our leadership and all the strong leaders. And I just felt like, this is it, this is it, we are headed there. And I still feel like that. You know, I, I know there are difficult times. And one of the things the, the assertive man said today was about his
That's a nice way.
Yes. What his concern was, why aren't people going into education? Well, I, I mean, it, it's, I'm like, hmm, why aren't they? Because people are constantly criticizing them. There's more and more expected of them. And, and there's not giant leaps in their pay. And so I, I wanna make sure that, that we all know and let, let our employees know how much we appreciate them and value them. Because as one former principal said, there aren't a lot of people behind the trees out there lined up to try to get jobs. And we've been really fortunate. We started the school year in such great shape. And thank you to all of our HR people and all of our principals and everybody. But, but that is, that's not the case for everyone. And, and I believe as we keep moving forward, not that we've ever moved back, I don't believe that, that we're gonna have more and more people wanna be here with us. So that's it. Anybody have anything else? Wow, that was long. Sorry, thank you all so much. Do I have a motion to present the consent agenda, a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Go ahead.
Motion by Gigi Robinson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Welsh. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Ms. Stidham?
That's all in favor.
Very good, thank you so much. Unfinished business, buildings and grounds. We are ready for a report. Ms. Lawson?
Okay, well, we met, Building and Grounds Committee met. That would be Pat Welsh and Dr. Stevens and Tim Jensen, John Olive and Hank Jordan. And we met on February the first. And I'm just gonna go down and, and just discuss some of the things that we discussed and what we have completed and what we have yet to complete. So I'll start with THS. The design and color concepts for the new gym floor and bleachers were discussed. The flooring company's graphic design team will take our feedback and create numerous mockups for review. Our committee also discussed repainting the gym walls and possible color schemes during this process. So you know, when you're remodeling your house and it's like all of a sudden, okay, I've got this flooring down, okay, well, the walls look terrible or the lighting or So to coordinate all that because we're, the, the floor is going to be brand spanking new. So, so we just discussed everything because we wanted to all come together. We wanted something that the community will be, and, and our stu-, well, our students and, and our faculty, staff, community, everyone that will be proud of. Because this has been a, a long time in changes, especially in, in our community, you know, with it's just, it's just hard to, so that's why we want, but you have to, you have to, to update and upgrade. So hopefully, what we looked at, I feel was really, really, it's gonna look really good. I'm, I'm excited about it. An architectural concept drawing was reviewed for possible changes to the locker rooms for the girls' PE, girls' basketball and volleyball teams. I'm sorry, y'all, I have allergies. So, and we're looking forward to that. But, so, is, was there anything else at the high school? Pat or Dr. Stevens, that you can think of? I think that was
I can only add, I felt like athletic director did a great job presenting colors
Yes.
logo and that type of thing.
Yes, he sure did. East Middle School, the remaining HVAC units were installed over the winter break. Train and TCS maintenance continue to work with the test imbalance of the system. The committee discussed and recommended further evaluation for improving the library area. Mr. Jordan and Mr. Jensen will explore some possible options to discuss with the committee in the future. Okay, moving to Fair. The committee discussed possible solutions to the school's need for a temporary playground as the construction of the new school has closed the existing playground. And I think what's been discussed is the round area in front with everything that's going on. And I went, I just drove by there after the meeting and I thought, and there were kids already, you know, out there, very supervised, by the way. And I think, I think that, I thought it was an excellent recommendation. And then other, the modifications to the central office entrance were completed in December. We have received many positive comments regarding the change to the front from TCS employees and community members. In which I'm, I'm one of the, I guess, the most vocal one because I have wanted that for so long. It was just, it's the, it's the, it's a doorstep of, of our school system. And, you know, like everything else, we just have to maintain and upgrade, update. The contract for our landscaping maintenance for the twenty-twenty-four school year was put out for bid. The bids are due February twenty-ninth for any interested parties. And then finally, the former Grider Stadium scoreboard that was donated by the city of Tallahassee was installed at the softball field in early January after being refurbished. The former scoreboard at the softball fields was donated to the Tallahassee Parks and Recreation Department and will be installed at the Wagner III Little League Field, which that will be wonderful. That's gonna be a wonderful thing. So that's all I have. Anything else? Can you, did, anything you'd like to add?
Communication alone between parks and the school system was great. There was a whole lot
Oh, there was, yeah.
Nice to see.
Good.
Dr. Stevens, you've got it.
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
I, I understand that, back to Farrah, that they're using that front circle area. Is it possible to get them some temporary playground equipment?
We're looking, yeah, we're looking at
Is that something we're investigating?
Well, I think right now, I'm, I'm not sure about the playground equipment. I'm, I'm not sure if we did, did we discuss that?
We discussed.
We discussed, but right now, they, they take ball, you know, just
Limited toys.
Limited, yes, like balls and different things like that. But I'm not sure, and of course, we've got to put up fences.
That's what we're looking at first, yeah. We want to close it for safety.
Well, I do know this from, you know, from preschool.
Yes.
You know, when you're having playground equipment, number one, that stuff is really expensive. But you have to have so much ground covering under it. So many, it has to have so many feet in between it. So it's a lot of, it takes a lot of planning to get a playground, even a temporary one, to, you know, to pass codes and to pass what's required by law.
Right.
That's
So what I, what I observed is they were playing ball and, you know, just running and, you know, running around. But we've got, and then we're gonna look at two because it may be a long-term situation with our pre-K and whatever she, whatever we
Little cats.
Little cats. And then we'll, we'll look at all of that at that time. But like Amy said, it's just a great expense. This is a tem-, very temporary situation with the whole school and until Farrah is built. And then we'll look at everything at that point. And I'm sure the principal will too and have some recommendations.
Great, thank you. I had one more thing. I'm sorry, y'all. It actually went with mine. And it was Dr. Boone provided this. And it, and she found it in E-Plan. And E-Plan, I don't know if I'm gonna describe this right, but E-Plan is what everything that we do, spend, say, plans, goes into for the state. And it's not just open to anyone, obviously. But she found this information in there and shared it. Eighty-one percent of our employees are teachers.
Of our educators.
Of our educators are teachers, eighty-one percent. Five percent are administrators. That five, that's, that's pretty low with that, with that amount. And just think, we added five. So that's low. And the rest are counselors, interventionists, other support staff and librarians. The South Central area average for employees being teachers is seventy-eight point nine percent. So we are two percent higher. Did I give the, did I say that correctly? Two percent higher in the amount of teachers we have.
And that is a report the state puts together.
Yes, that didn't come from us. That came from the state.
We can plug in, what do we wanna compare to? If we wanna kinda look at how we're doing. So that was a South Central comparison.
But I thought it was interesting. So thank you for that. That was great. Okay, we've done our reports. Did you have anything else, Dr. Stevens? Okay, City Board Liaison Report?
Well, we've got, but unfinished business. Mr. Budget.
Oh, y'all, look at me. I'm way down there, I'm way down there. Okay, Budget, Mr. Jordan.
All right. As I mentioned at our last meeting, we are starting that process for the budget. We're halfway through the year, so we are looking at that. We have been in communication, myself and the maintenance director, with each building level leadership staff. And we're gathering all their needs and requests. We'll kinda go through that. Just this afternoon, we received an email that gave a little bit of insight into the new TESA formula, kinda some insight on how the base funding's gonna work, the CTE funding. The email also said that we will have our first estimate by the end of the month. It will be from a data pool that they did on the fifteenth of February. So again, I'm sure from Dr. Stevens, that data coordinator position's really cleaned up our, our reports. And we'll feel good about that, that information. So we'll be meeting, we'll set up a meeting with our finance committee before our, our next meeting, but we'll start grinding out the budget. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Sorry to skip everybody. Okay, Fall Club Sports?
Yes, and I think I will piggyback just a hair on that budget, if that's okay. I'm gonna go off the top of my head, but the base is changing. So the base was sixty-eight, sixty last year, and I believe it's seven thousand seventy-five. So the base is
So the base is going up. The intent there is, um, to help systems move toward that required law change of the fifty thousand first-year teacher.
What was it, seventy-five, did you say?
Seven thousand seventy-five dollars. So it used to be sixty-eight, sixty. I think it's two fifteen increase. Um, that's per student on the base. And then what that does is on your unique learning needs, that multiplier, obviously, larger base, larger, right? Um, the other thing is this year, again, so this school year, the CTE ADM, uh, earned five thousand dollars per student. TESA isn't truly designed to keep it that way. It's designed to look at CTE courses compared to high needs. And some will get five thousand and some will get three thousand and so forth. But this year, they're holding steady one more year with five thousand. So that's a positive for us for this year. But those are two things that I just thought I'd lift up that you alluded to.
Thank you. Okay, fall club sports.
Yes, okay. So all club sports must be approved by the Board of Education prior to beginning their activities. So Board Policy four three oh three defines club sports as extracurricular athletic activities sponsored by community orgas-, organizations under the auspices of the Telahoma City School Board of Education. There, the following club sports are presented for approval. Uh, in that policy, it conveys that our athletic director works very closely with all of those coaches and all of those programs. And so he would recommend that we approve the following club sports. For middle school, it's bass team, swimming, and then sixth grade basketball. For high school, it's Telahoma swimming and Telahoma bass team. So administration does recommend fall school, club sports as presented.
Very good. Do it. Is there a motion to accept fall club sports as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Teresa Lawson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Andy Witt. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Ms. Didham?
That's all in favor.
Thank you. Skyward contract renewal, Mr. Jordan?
All right, thank you. On June thirtieth this year, our current agreement with Skyward Business Suite will be expiring. Um, our district converted to the system on July first of two thousand twenty-one. And we use the software for many functions. We use it, um, for human resources, our financial management, employee access where employees can go into the system, see their, uh, payroll records, their time off and all that. Um, Skyward has proposed two extension offers. One is a three-year commitment locking the annual rate at nine dollars and fifteen cents per student, which is our current rate, rate, by the way. And for your reference, this year, we're paying twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and eight dollars for this software. Um, the, this, um, the other offer they propose is a one-year offer for the rate of ten dollars and six cents per student. These, uh, offers are on the table until March fifteenth. Um, so, uh, if we don't make a decision by then, I'm sure that the rate will change. Um, after discussions with Dr. Sudbury, our director of technology, we're recommending that we renew the contract of Skyward for three years at the rate of nine dollars and fifteen cents per student. Uh, both Dr. Sudbury and I have been pleased with the software, um, and we believe the cost is competitive and reasonable.
And we've just gotten used to using it.
You're right.
Right, right.
And when I mentioned bringing this up, she says-
Right, right.
We're just getting used to it.
Goodness. Do I have a motion to approve the three-year Skyward contract of nine dollars and fifteen cents per student, which is the current rate?
Can I move?
Motion by Gigi Robison. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy Dotson. Any discussion?
Why would be, what would be a reason to go go on?
We were, we were moving, you know, if we, if we had identified we need to move, we could, and you would give it every time.
But both of y'all feel comfortable, that's not necessarily right.
Mind you, certainly, the districts are also using Skyward.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Ms. Didham?
That's all in favor, Matt and Chair.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Now we go to the district report and now we got a city board liaison report. And I believe Mr. Berry had to leave. Okay, personnel?
Yes, the, uh, personnel changes for February twenty twenty-four have been included in your attachments in BOE Connect.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, monthly financial report, Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, um, attached, in your attachment, excuse me. A little difficulty here. Um, in, in your attachments, you will have the report through January thirty-first. Um, I'll just make a point, um, Teloma City, um, our sales tax for Coffee County's been very strong again. It's up almost four percent every year. So we've been very fortunate to have that. Um, and that's, that's been strong. Any other questions, I'll be glad to, glad to take those.
It's great. Keep those, keep buying stuff. Is there anything else to come before the board? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Okay. Um, I watched the recent BOMA meeting and I understand that there's been an invitation extended to the school board to-
You received the invitation?
I have not. Okay, maybe it's forthcoming, um, just to have like a joint working session with the BOMA.
Okay.
Um, just something to put on our radar then.
That'd be good.
I thought, I thought, I heard, I thought when I wa-, what I watched, and I may be incorrect, but what I thought it was, uh, it was mentioned that, um, waiting until after the election, uh, before we met. I think I heard that and I may be wrong, but I think.
Sure. I mean, they'll reach out to somebody.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's what they were recommending, that what you're talking about is get together. But, uh, I think it may have been Mayor Nois who said, uh, wait until after the, uh, elections. But like I said, I could have heard.
Thank you. Um, also, I guess I need to say, we, we do need to find a time for a study session. So, um, we will get Ms. Didham to send out a something.
Before the next regular meeting?
I'm not positive, uh, because we have spring break. So, I mean, it would be great. I don't think it has to be a long one, but we, there are a few things. So, um, we'll just start working on some dates and everybody just, you know, see what works for you. And then we'll, we'll just go from there and, um, and then we'll look at also a date for a short retreat at that time, okay?
Okay.
Or should, do you want her to send out both of those dates?
You can.
Okay.
Cause I need to get it on camera.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You've got soccer. Okay, anything, anything else? Thank you, everyone. A motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Andy Witt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Teresa Lawson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Ms. Didham? Meeting is adjourned.
Yay.
Excellent.